Okay.
Check.
You have to.
Stop pushing.
Check. Don't play with the bunch.
Very sensitive.
Oh, thank you. That's what I need. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Kingston Planning Board's special meeting, June 3, 2019. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, introductions. My name is Wayne Platt Jr. I'm the chairman. We also have Charles Palaco, the vice chairman, Robert Jacobson, Mary Jo Wiltshire, Matt Gillis, Jamie Mills, and Kevin Roach. We also have Suzanne Cahill, who was the planning director for the City of Kingston. Kyla D-Day is the assistant planner. We also have Donna Brady, the senior clerk. Daniel Gartenstein, Assistant Corporation Counsel, and Alderman Reynolds Scott Childress, who's the common council liaison to the planning board. Some housekeeping issues. Exits are either side of the council chambers. Bathrooms are to my left. Case of emergency, we're not going to use the elevator. I would ask folks to silence their cell phones at this time, and if there's a need to have a conversation, we do have some conference rooms. Actually, is this one being used right now, this conference room? All right, we're going to use the conference room over here for those conversations, and we ask that folks respect the speakers. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to... The planning board will be determining specific areas/studies which we believe will be critical for the decision-making process with regard to the Kingstonian. I will shortly be reading that into record, the address and section block and lot. First, we'll begin with the open public speaking. We try to allow 15 minutes for this process. Doesn't necessarily have to do with anything on our agenda, which is, we only have one item, but I will remind folks that this is not a public hearing on the Kingstonian, so any comments made on this project during the open public speaking will not become part of the official record. So, having said that, if there's anybody wishing to speak at this time, please come up to the microphone.
One person.
Okay.
That's open.
I have Dee Proctor. Do I have that right? Okay. 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 That's fine. Okay. Seeing nobody at the microphone, we're going to close the open public speaking. Moving on to item number two. We're in old business. This is number 9-17 and 21 North Front Street and 51 Schwenck Drive and a portion of Fair Street Extension. And we're going to combine item number three into this as well. We have a lotline deletion of the lands of the Herzog Supply Company and the City of Kingston. Section block and lot is 48.80-1-56-26 and 24.100. Seeker Determination Zone C2, Mixed Use Overlay District. Kingstonian Development LLC is the applicant. Herzog Supply Company Incorporated and City of Kingston are the owners. Look at that. Okay, this will also incorporate a site plan/special permit to construct a mixed-use building with a 420-car garage, 129 apartments, 32 hotel rooms, and 800 square feet of retail space. So, that's that. We have the applicant's representatives up here. Can you state your names for the record, please?
Dennis Larios from Bernier &amp; Larios, PC in Kingston, site engineer for the project.
Michael Moriello, attorney for the project with Riesley and Moriello.
Do you have an opening statement you want to read before, or say before we get going, or we can go right into what we're here for? Okay. All right, so as I mentioned, you know, we've heard a lot of issues, and we're here to determine specific areas or studies which the planning board believes will be critical for the decision-making process with this particular project. We have some letters in our packets. I think this would be appropriate to start with those. The first one is from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. The first bullet that they've identified here is, says, "Based on the review, we have the following comments and concerns with the proposed project. Visual impacts to the Senate House historic site and visual and other impacts to the site need to be considered as part of the review." Do you want to talk to that about the...
Only to the extent that we understand and the applicant is willing to prepare a detailed visual assessment from vantage points, including the Senate House property and whatever vantage points this board and other involved agencies so request. To that end, I did bring an area map tonight that you can mark up with Sharpies if you want, if you can decide what vantage points you think are appropriate to both look at the existing site visuals and then the superimposed...proposed project. And I also brought stills of, you know, seven or eight vantage sites that are in the vicinity of the project, including the Senate House property, various intersections nearby and streets. But obviously, we're...we understand that we've had that ship-o letter for quite some time, so we understand specifically where they want the view shed. But obviously, you're the lead agency, and we were quite certain that you would want numerous location view shed as part of the Seeker review.
I have some vantage points that I've identified. I don't know if any of the board members, before I go into reading them, that want to discuss or submit what vantage points they think would be important to...for this project?
The neighborhood and beyond, but with a bigger version out here. I printed this out all the way up to the Skytop, the old Skytop Motel, which is the one bluff probably closest to the project. That's at elevation about 100 feet higher than the project site itself.
And how far is that from here? I mean, what are we talking about? Is it...
Probably...
Mile and a half, maybe, or...
At least a mile. I can measure it off tonight if you need that, but while you're deliberating.
Okay. Well, I have one from the Senate House lawn, which is the lawn located at the corner of North Front and Fair Street.
Can we mark them with the Sharpie?
Do you want to mark them? Senate, the Senate House lawn at North Front and Fair Street. Schwenck Drive, I would say, at Fair Street Extension. Would that be a good spot? Kingston Plaza, also a, as you approach on Wall Street, if you're coming down towards there, somewhere on Wall Street, as it would appear, a visual also on Fair Street, a ways down from the Senate House lawn.
How far up Fair Street would be appropriate?
I would say probably that Victorian building that goes with the Senate House across Remrabco's office.
The mic, please.
Wall Street. Do you want two? One at the intersection of North Front, one further up towards John Street?
Yeah, that would be good.
All the way up to John, you think, or here's two, two shots. That's at the intersection, and that's up at John Street.
And North Front Street from a vantage point down towards Crown Street, somewhere down. I know there's a little knoll that you come up there on. Yeah, probably. And maybe a rendering where North Front, where you're coming on from Clinton Avenue as you're making that turn.
You...
Yeah.
And did we have anything on Schwenck Drive as you're going from, let's say, Holster Savings Bank down the hill toward the project, or...
We can...I didn't specify anything exactly on Schwenck Drive if this, if folks have...
Somewhere down by the old Buick or Kia dealership.
By Frog Alley, down towards that way? Somewhere down there?
A bit closer.
Yeah, I don't see it from Frog Alley.
No.
Just past the Buick?
Around the Buick. Yeah, just enough that you can see the bridge and the buildings, and you can see the buildings heading up Schwenck as it goes up to Clinton.
Coming down Schwenck towards Fair Street, kind of right now, you're seeing the side of the Uptown Grill, which was Waynes' and the warehouse, but that'll be a totally different view shed if the project is constructed. So, halfway down the hill from Schwenck Drive, paying down from Clinton, if you think that, well, that would be appropriate, sort of that location.
And that remote location from Skytop, I think that's an appropriate place to...I don't know how much farther we can go out without losing the...
About 7,400 feet.
Yeah.
So, it's about a mile and a third, I guess.
Vantage point that you'd actually be able to see the building from the previous...
Other than the county building. Halfway down Schwenck Drive from Clinton.
Okay.
You get past Long North Front Street coming down.
Yeah.
Where you can see the side of the warehouse and the side of, what was it, Waynes?
And then Wayne Skytop, too?
Yeah, that sounds a...and that might be, like I say, that might be, as Robert said, that might be the only, you know, high point that we could get a good view, I think, from to that site. I mean, there's a...
There's a nice patio at the restaurant up there. I'm sure that'll give us permission as well.
Okay.
That overlooks the Stockade District from afar, but it's a nice vantage point.
Does anybody else have any other thoughts on additional vantage points to look through? No? Okay.
Nine, two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about from the plaza?
That was one of the...
Yeah, that's on there.
Yeah.
North Front. I have Schwenck Drive by Buick.
Plaza, you'd be looking at somewhere in the parking lot near the Mac Fitness and entrance to Health Quest and Mac Fitness. I don't know if you get down in the plaza near, on the backside of Herzog's and Walgreens, that you're gonna, you're gonna have an obstructed view there, but if you get it out in this open parking area. Or we can move it down towards Dutch Village, but you're gonna have on Schwenck Drive just past the Cargill dealership, so that would probably take that angle.
Good. We'll move on to the next point in the...
Anybody else have any thoughts on visual points that they should be taking?
Now, this talks about the facades here. We want to just go in bubble, and we're going to be jumping around at different things, so... All right, the next point from the ship-o letter. They do say that the proposed facade designs of the buildings appear to be appropriate as new infill within the historic district. They do, however, recommend that the penthouse or elevator tower on the garage roof that may be visible from the district. They recommend that this be lowered or pushed back so it will not be visible or will be minimally visible from public vantage points within the historic district. If it is visible, they're saying black cladding is recommended. What are your thoughts on that?
I think we can make that invisible from the street views. I will...
And you can give us a rendering of that one?
I'll review that with the project architect, but I don't think that comment is problematic at all. And as you know, the parking garage itself is totally hidden.
Right.
Part of the design.
The pedestrian bridge.
That's gone. That was in the original application, in the original illustrative site plan, but that...
That's going to be removed?
The applicants have already voluntarily removed that from project consideration. And that was a comment made by, I think, Landmarks and some others, that they thought that was inappropriate, and the applicant and their architects agree. You know, it was something I wanted for the function of the facility, but they agree that the project is better without it.
And how would we address the navigation of pedestrians from the project to the plaza in its place?
Well, that particular feature was connecting the two buildings across Fair Street, and it was essentially cutting the pedestrian plaza in half. You'd have to go through this glass quarter. So, that's what's being removed, so the pedestrian plaza will extend all the way... Right.
Correct.
I was confused. I understand.
The pedestrian, the plan as it currently stands is there'll be a pedestrian link, an overhead pedestrian link from the garage in the project to the plaza.
I was confused. I apologize.
So, that's still in the project proposal.
Okay. With regards to the Herzog Building, Ship-O says, "It is unclear from the current submission whether the existing building will be restored." They recommend that you consider retaining and restoring the existing building based on historical documentation. I know that part of your application includes demolition of some of the buildings or building.
The application currently includes demolition of the Herzog's Warehouse Building and the Uptown Grill.
And can you discuss why retaining the building versus, you know, is not feasible for the project? I don't know if you can speak to that now, what you found with the building?
Well, I will speak, not the person that did that evaluation, or the firm that did that evaluation, but based on the architect's review of the condition of the warehouse building, the structural condition, and where the bearing walls are located. It's a chopped-up old boardinghouse style with very small rooms and a lot of bearing, interior bearing walls. There's a lot of cracks and breaks. You can see it even from the street, openings in the walls. They didn't feel that the building could be salvaged as part of any adoptive reuse, and certainly not the adoptive reuse of a hotel that, which that building will be mostly a hotel. To meet current codes and standards, it would be, they felt, close to impossible, if not impossible. But we will evaluate that in the Seeker report that will include the visual impacts and the cultural resource assessment section.
Does anybody on the board have anything further to expand on with that? All right, the last bullet that they've, the Ship-O has illustrated here, "Construction to the north of the historic district. The design of the new construction should generally be compatible but differentiated from the adjacent historic district. They recommend using natural materials such as red brick cladding, which can also be painted, wood clapard, or beveled fiber cement siding. Simplified cornices are also recommended, and the cornices proposed for the new garage and corner building are good examples." So, they've commended you on those, use of those materials. And you care to comment on anything with this bullet, or...
I think the project architect, as part of that assessment, will both acknowledge changes that have been made to, and will also address any outstanding issues with respect to the architectural treatment. And then, of course, you have various boards that will be reviewing that as well.
Anybody have any comment from the board on that? And finally, Ship-O does...all right, they say, "Our agency can continue to comment on the proposed project. That the following and additional information is provided." We've talked about the visual impact study for the Senate House. That was included in our previous conversation. Provide them with any updated renderings and drawings based on their above comments or other substantial changes as the project progresses. Again, they've considered, they want you to consider retaining and restoring the existing Herzog Building based on documentary and physical evidence. They're asking that interior photos of the Herzog Building be provided prior to alteration. If you can, you're going to take care of that?
The project team will. Yeah, that will be outside of my particular area of work, but the architect and the cultural resource expert that's going to, on the team, will be evaluating that.
Okay. Also, provide elevation drawings of the proposed work when they are available at the preliminary or pre-final phases, and provide any available historic images to illustrate the project area during various historic periods. So, that is basically the letter from Ship-O.
Do we have from the city any of the old photos of the parking garage and the prior building that was there before the parking garage?
This little packet, which I'll pass around, only brought one, has photo, historic photos.
This has the photos?
Of everything but the hideous parking garage.
Okay.
But it has the Montgomery Ward's Building that predated the parking garage, and it has the Herzog's Warehouse Building and its various configurations going back.
And you already have this as part of the...
These are interesting pictures, and I think they were submitted previously, but...
Okay. Thank you, Dennis, and... Yeah, our next letter is from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. They are in receipt of our lead agency coordination letter, and they've offered some opinions of their own and comments. One is the protection of waters. It says, "There are no water bodies that appear in our regulatory maps at the location you have identified. Therefore, if there's a stream or pond outlet present with year-round flow, it assumes the classification to the water course into which it feeds is most likely the Asopus Creek." So, it says that they would be required to, and a protection of waters would be required to disturb the bed or banks. You're not going to be disturbing anything down there. So, freshwater wetlands, this site is not within the New York State Protected Freshwater Wetland. And, I mean, I'm sure you've already been in touch with, it says, local town officials or Army Corps of Engineers for any permitting that they might require.
Well, what will be required under their auspices, and I'm not even sure the letter mentioned it, but project disturbance will be greater than acre, so there will be a stormwater pollution prevention plan requirement, and a requirement to treat the stormwater coming from the site. Currently, as you know, the site is substantially paved and/or roof, and that flow goes untreated to the Asopus Creek, and it'll be treated to redevelopment standards as part of the project, and that'll be in a report to the board, to the lead agency.
Okay. With regards to cultural resources, they, DEC says that their records indicate that the project is located within an area considered to be sensitive with regard to archaeological resources. It's adjacent to the Kingston Stockade District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And so, with regards to the archaeological portion of this, I think the rest of the board agrees that we need, you know, that an archaeological assessment will need to be done. Have you already reached out to folks for that?
We've retained Joe Diamond, PhD over, he's a professor at SUNY New Paltz, does a tremendous amount of this kind of work, and he will be providing the archaeological aspect of it. As far as historic's go, I think it's going to be more the architectural firm responding and some supplemental work in terms of historic. Joe will dovetail into some of that, too, so... I think, too, that DEC mentioned endangered threatened species, too. We've also hired Ecological Solutions LLC. That's a fellow named Michael Nowicki. Does a ton of that kind of work in front of DEC and with respect to projects.
And does that kind of a report just basically deal with the footprint of your...how far does that go out?
What Mike will generally do is take an assessment of the site. He will deal with the area comprising the building footprint, but he generally includes the entire site, and it's a, he checks for endangered threatened species of plants and animals. So, also, he will note any area, generally note any areas of, or of special concern, you know, if they're maybe not listed, but of special concern. So, he's very, very thorough.
Okay. This kind of segues into my next item here is a geotechnical report.
Yeah, the geotechnical report actually is completed, was completed as part of a... due diligence that the applicants were doing before they started investing heavily into the project. And it was the intent to, I think we spoke to Sue, is not to submit each report as it's completed, but to submit them pretty much totally as a package to the lead agency, and also copy to the appropriate involved agency. But the geotechnical report was extensive, both in the amount of testing that was done and the analysis by the geotechnical engineer, who's Vernon Hoffman, PE, and he's done a lot of work in the area on a lot of the projects.
How about water supply? Any?
We are preparing, our firm will be preparing a report that will include water supply, both as a capacity issue and as a specific project delivery issue, and sanitary sewer capacity in the area, and also at the treatment works and the receiving waters. So that'll be a separate standalone study, water and sewer together. We've had preliminary discussions with both your city engineer and your water superintendent, and we've collected all the background data. It's our intention to run as much as possible of the wastewater to the gravity system on North Front, but some of it will go to the Schwenk Drive system, which, that flows to the Frog Alley pump station. That pump station has very low pump run times.
Have you initiated any conversations with any of those agencies?
Just with the city departments that have jurisdiction over those.
Okay. So that's, the conversation has started?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're not anticipating significant issues in those two areas, but.
So you've come across some challenges with everything, with, like, we'll go into this later, but the closure of Fair Street Extension, you've got, with water supply and sewage and?
Well, there's a, there's no sanitary sewer on that block of Fair Street. There are some storm drains, and there's a water line that runs from Schwenk Drive up to North Front Street. There's a main 16-inch primary transmission line in North Front Street, and there's a loop down that little block of Fair Street to Schwenk. The water superintendent would like to keep that as an active loop, so it will be reinstalled under the pedestrian plaza, and then a drop pipe into the lower part of that Fair Street Extension is going to stay pretty much at the current grade, and it'll be a platform that extends out over some of it. So that water distribution component will be maintained as part of the project with aneasement to the water department. We don't see that as problematic at all.
How is that accessible? I'm trying to visualize how the water line going down Fair Street Extension would be accessible, if they need to maintain.
It'll be five feet below the pedestrian plaza, which will be reasonably flat, back quite a distance from North Front. There'll be a drop pipe down to the lower level of Fair Street Extension, where from that point on, it'll be in a street, although that, we believe, is part of this project. We met with Public Works, they do not want to keep that little half-block of Fair Street. They'd rather have the developers take that over because they don't want to have to plow it in, you know, without a turnaround. So we believe, although this will be a common council decision, that that section of that street will also essentially be part of the project, a private street open to the public. That'll be the main entrance into the project, as far as vehicles, into the garage and the project off of Schwenk. But the only complication, it's not really complication, there'll be a drop pipe from the plaza down to that lower level that'll have an insulated water main in it.
What may seem a challenge to the layperson is probably something that's like?
Well, there's a lot of challenges to trying to build this project, as you know, it's, but that particular aspect of it, you know, she has at least initially indicated, I don't want to speak for her, but that she would like to keep that cross connection between Schwenk and North Front Street. It is cross-connected at Frog Alley as well and up Schwenk to Clinton, but.
Okay.
It's an asset of the water department and the water system currently, and she would like to keep it. So it's our intent to keep her, grant her wish.
So, you know, with water supply coming in, we deal with wastewater coming out, right? One of my points here is a wastewater capacity analysis. What have you, what have your, have you been discussing, you've probably been meeting with our engineer already on these, right?
We had a meeting with Public Works and a city engineer a few weeks ago. We have all the data from the plant. We have the prior studies that were done by Malcolm Pirney Arcadis with respect to the plant and its capacity. As you know, the plant's undergoing probably a redesign to meet some new effluent limits that have been imposed by the DEC with respect to nitrogen. The capacity, you've had a project of, that had an allocated design flow of 530,000 gallons a day, just come off the books, so to speak, which was the AVR project. This project has a design flow of approximately 28,000 gallons a day, which is about 5% of what that project was going to. And there was an allocation in the prior Malcolm Pirney and Arcadis studies for the uptown, quote, uptown garage project, which I believe was 50,000 or 70,000 gallons a day, which, when it was initially proposed, it was a much larger project than what's in front of you now. You know, 2004, 2005 timeframe, it had a lot more units, and it was a much taller building, a much larger project. So this is, we don't see that there'll be a capacity issue with respect to wastewater, but we will outline the conveyance works to your main system and also the treatment works, and that'll be in a report submitted to you folks, and subject to the review and approval of city engineer and Public Works, and same with water.
Okay. You'll go to that one, yeah. One big issue that's been, that's been brought up is parking demand and the analysis, and also traffic impact analysis. Can you talk to that?
Yeah, we can talk to that. Creighton Manning has been retained by the applicant, and they're also doing work in the uptown area currently for the county with respect to certain intersections. Tentatively, we suggested a review of nine intersections as far as traffic and the impacts of the project, both in terms of the increased traffic associated with the project, and also the closing of that one block of Fair Street, and what will that do to the intersections in that, in that area.
Can you identify those?
Okay, tentatively, and obviously subject to your approval, Schwenk Drive, Washington Avenue, Washington Avenue and North Front Street, Schwenk Drive, Fair Street Plaza driveway, which is, sorry, that's going to be the main entrance to the project, Schwenk Drive and Clinton Avenue, and that's up by the Senate House, North Front Street at Wall, North Front Street at Fair, Clinton Avenue at John Street, Clinton Avenue at Westbrook Lane, Clinton Avenue at Main Street. We, originally, were anticipating Clinton Avenue at Pearl and Albany, but that is being studied by the county separately, and there's some grant money the city's received as part of that 10 million that's supposed to address that intersection. Good luck to them. But, so those are the key intersections that the traffic engineers thought were appropriate to be evaluated as part of this project based on their initial review of the project, and...
Do board members have any other input on those intersections or additional intersections?
There was discussion, there was discussion recently about the possible reversal of the one-way streets of Fair and Wall, so that certainly would.
Yeah, the issue with that is, there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parks right now with that, and whether that's ever going to happen. We did have that discussion with county planners and the county planning people that are running the Transportation Council. That might be a recommendation that comes out of this study as well, that that would be a benefit, and that would, but the first step is to take counts. I can tell you the counts have been taken at peak hours in the month of May at these nine intersections. If there's additional intersections that you feel are project critical, we could consider looking at those as well, but it's pretty significant to be looking at nine for this project.
How about Frog Alley, too? Is that part of any?
Frog Alley intersection at Schwenk, I don't think is a capacity issue, it's a safety issue, because people, there's too many movements going on there.
What about Frog Alley at North Front, since you're going to have people looping around?
We could look at that.
Yeah.
The other moving part here is the city has an RFP out to redesign Schwenk Drive as part of this 10 million. I'm not sure, it's a very loosely defined scope of work right now, what the intention is there, except I know the, one of the intents is to make it more bicycle friendly. So I don't know what study level is going to go on with that project as well when they, when they hire a traffic engineer to do that work. But certainly, they're going to look at the safety at the intersection of Frog Alley and Schwenk Drive, because the biggest issue is?
Driveways.
Well, Time Warner, which is now Spectrum, that office is very busy. That used to be a low-traffic generation spot, but now there's a lot of movements there that didn't exist before, as far as, and the bank branches on both sides are much more active sites than they were 10, 15 years ago, so to speak. So I think that's candidate possibly for a signal, more than a capacity issue, to let people out of Frog Alley safely, so they don't try to jump a couple lanes of traffic while cars are trying to get out of the Spectrum office and the bank. And some vehicles are doing U-turns through turn lanes that aren't supposed to, so I don't really think that's necessarily a capacity issue as much as there has to be a pause in the traffic there to let people out of Frog Alley safely. And people come ripping down the hill from Washington Avenue down Schwenk, too, at pretty good speed sometimes, so.
Did you mention, I don't know what was on your list, on Wall Street at North, at John? Only be, I'm just thinking where if people are going to try to avoid going all the way to the end of Wall Street, they'll be making the right on to John Street. I know you have John at the other end.
Can talk about that. I, one thing that I believe is going to happen here is that 95% of the traffic, at least project-specific traffic, as far as the apartments, boutique hotel, are going to come from Schwenk Drive into their parking structure or into the site from Schwenk, and are going to avoid North Front Street. There will be an entrance into the garage from North Front Street, a one-way entrance only, just so people don't go around the block. Part of the, if you look at Uptown, and I work Uptown and I eat Uptown every day, part of the problem with traffic there is a lack of parking, and people keep going around the block, try to find a space. Another part is deliveries, trucks blocking off, one, especially on North Front Street, where it's a two-way, and you have to wait because of deliveries, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest issue, but.
Dennis, has there been any discussions with the fire department on their emergency access routes with Fair Street being closed? Because I know having a building on Fair Street, they tend to loop around and go straight down Fair Street to get to the other side of town, and they're now losing that corridor.
We have not had that discussion, we will have that discussion.
More of the point of view of you, the Uptown every day, of what Uptown traffic is going to do, not necessarily project traffic, but Uptown getting around. I mean, right now, you can go right down Wall, quick little loop, and you're down to the plaza now, and people will likely take the right on John, cross Fair, head over to Clinton.
One thing I think is needed is more, some, possibly some designated delivery stalls and times, because right now, delivery trucks are double parking, they're blocking parked cars in, and they're blocking a lane of traffic on, on the streets that are two-way, and sometimes they're blocking a one-way street completely. So you see it mostly in North Front because it's two-way. Wall Street, they're blocking one lane, but, you know, Wall Street has two lanes through the business district anyway, but.
North Front Street, 1230 beer deliveries.
I mean, it's, it's an issue with or without the project that I would hope would be, could be addressed. It's one thing, I think, having more off-street parking available to people that want to visit the district will make it better, but the delivery vehicles are the biggest, biggest issues. I did notice that in front of, on Corner John and Wall now, they took four parking spaces out and kind of designated for drop-off and deliveries at that corner, although the signs aren't up yet. I believe that was the intent.
Can you just reiterate, how many parking spots will be allocated for, just for Uptown parking, not anything associated with, with the building itself? Is there?
My understanding at present is that the structure is 420 parking spaces. 290 of those will be dedicated to the city, to anyone that wants to use them. 130 spaces will be designated to the project specifically, and there will be an allocation of some spaces within the Kingston Plaza for employees and/or residents that want a second car to keep it there. There is an area between the back of what was Sears and James Way and Ames, now is a multi-use building. Between there and Dutch Village, there's quite an area of undesignated parking that's not used as part of the plaza.
And is that something that's new to the whole discussion, that, that aspect of it, of the parking?
That's my understanding of the nature of the discussions that.
I know there's been a lot of discussion on parking, and I just, I may have missed that along the way, I just didn't know if it was something new that, to the proposal.
Well, you'll be asked, after Seeker's done, obviously, you'll be asked to waive the one and a half car per apartment, and, and the clause in your zoning that allows you to do that is if there's, one, nearby municipal lot, and, two, nearby properties controlled by the applicant that can be also used for parking. In this case, unique case, the, one of the applicants happens still in the Kingston Plaza, where there's some excess parking on the west end, and.
Just have to comment that I've been going to physical therapy there on Wednesdays, and there is barely a spot available in the middle of the day.
Yeah, but there's an unapproved lot over here.
Okay.
Way out here.
You're going to approve that also?
Yes.
Because anything in front of, from the MAC and physical therapy, right to the corner of the doctor's office that's there?
Yes.
That lot is.
That lot is, no question. That lot is, no question, at times it is, especially.
How many spots?
Well, that's subject to a negotiation with you folks and the common council and the mayor, but certainly, there's spaces that can be created there, and my understanding is the applicant is willing to designate it, an area there for both employees that may be working in the building and also for folks that would want, some folks that would or have a second car that they would want to, they would be able to park off-site, but within walking distance.
I know we've touched on the prospect of closing Fair Street Extension. Where are, where is the applicant, where are they in that general discussion with the city? Has that happened, started happening already, those discussions?
I believe those discussions are, have happened, at least on a formal basis, but that will be a formal request made of the common council.
Has that been made yet, that formal request?
And we can't, we can't, we can't do anything with the common council taking action until a determination of significance is made under Seeker, so any discussions have been preliminary at this point. But this is a coordinated review for Seeker, so that documentation has been sent to the common council. They're free to comment, too, during the pendency of Seeker review.
One of the initial requests to the applicants was to create a pedestrian plaza and an open public space between the city parking lot parcel and what's now the Herzog Warehouse property, and as part of the project to create public gathering place and kind of mini-park area there. In order to do that, you have to close the street.
Right.
Obviously, the project could function with a through street there and a bridge across, some corridor pedestrian link across, but I think the public plaza there adds significantly to the, to the value of the project to this, for the city, it's obviously an opinion, but that was a request made, you know, of the applicants early on before they even started putting pen to pencil, and, you know, I think it's a nice element of the project. So, but that will require an abandonment of that, that block, you know, between North Front Street and Schwenk, that one block of Fair Street.
Can we go back to parking for just one moment?
Sure.
Can you talk about the operation of the parking? Is the, are the metering, are there going to be metered spaces? Is it going to be city maintaining, or not maintaining, but operating those parking areas, or is?
Kevin, you need to speak into the...
Or is the applicant going to be operating the parking? And as a second part of that, what will the rates be as compared to the city's street?
Okay. Those discussions are ongoing. My understanding is this, in general, that the applicants are being asked to both construct the garage and to operate it at no expense to the city and to charge rates that are compatible with other public parking in the area, and that would be subject to approval by the city, as far as a monthly rate or daily rate or an hourly rate. There will be automatic machines there that will allow you in. Like I said, there'll be, from what I understand, and again, this is 100, approximately 130 spaces will be designated for each apartment, and the rest will be subject to the authority of the city, both with respect to charges and the operating costs, cleaning, security, lighting, ventilation, all those elements will be responsibility of the project applicants and owners going forward, which is a heavy lift.
Thank you.
Going into the open public space, you just talked about it briefly, can you, can you explain that and how that's going to take place, how we make it user-friendly, and also the walkability of the site getting into, into that and around the site?
Well, the, the open promenade public space there will be open to the public, and there will be commercial space that will be in the buildings at that level of the building, so people can walk there 20, as far as I know, 24 hours a day. The shops and stores, whatever type of establishments, end up locating there on that, on that level, you know, obviously won't be open 24 hours, well, unless they're crazy, but, but, you know, they'll be open, normal business hours, some might be open, you know, one might be a restaurant, like, there'll be probably a mix, mix of types of stores in there. And I would, I can't speak in too much more detail than Joe Benora and the architects are designing that, and they're open to making a lot of, obviously getting a lot of public input on the design of that space. They've laid out a basic area and a basic concept at present, but it's supposed to be an open pedestrian plaza, which means open to the public 24/7.
And then with the elimination of the bridge going over Schwenk Drive, the walkability?
They're not eliminating the bridge over.
The pedestrian bridge, that's been eliminated, correct?
No.
Oh, what was, what was the eliminated bridge?
The bridge over the Fair Street Extension.
Okay. See, I'm glad, I'm glad we got, got that question here, then.
And I would, I would say that that area, it may not be 24/7, we have to see what, there may be some reasonable hours enforced on that.
This connector here.
Okay. I got you.
Between the hotel, really, and the apartments.
Okay.
Warehouse site of Fair Street, that, that was being proposed to connect the two buildings. At the plaza level, that, that is being voluntarily withdrawn from the project. So it makes the plaza much more of a, doesn't bisect the project, the pedestrian plaza anymore.
Okay.
Which will keep the plaza more open to Fair Street and North Front.
And is that bridge going to, across Schwenk Drive, that's going to be an open 24/7 as well, or?
I don't know the hours of that bridge, it'll be open substantial, substantially, but I'm not sure that 24/7 yet. I'm not sure we can answer that yet.
You had a question, Robert?
We're just sitting over, digressing from our...
We can, if you want to.
If you... Just to get back to the comments here, are we digressing?
As far as the DOT, you mean? Going on to the DOT letter, we, I can certainly go into that next.
I just figured, we're going through these, and I feel like we're kind of digressing a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Going back to the packet that we've had with letters from the, the agencies we sent out to, this one's from the Department of Transportation.
Covered the traffic studies.
I think we did.
The different areas that they want.
Yep.
I think we're on to probably historic's.